Good morning. Good morning, and welcome to the city council study session for October the 2nd, 2014. Mr. Kavanaugh is excused. He can't be with us this morning, and Mr. Summers will join us shortly. Item one on the agenda is to review the agenda for the October 6 regular council meeting. So let's go through that, page by page, starting with page number two. Items one through four. Page three, items four B, four C. Next page is four D through four F. Most of these are purchases. Same pretty routine. Item, page five, four G through five A. And then five B through six E. And then six F through nine A. Introducing some ordinances. And the last page is nine B through 12. Yes, I'm sorry.
I just want to make a quick comment. I'm noticing a lot more Mesa businesses winning procurement, and I just appreciate the outreach that's taken place that position them in a way that they could bid. And sometimes they win, sometimes they don't. But, you know, just wanted to give kind of kudos to our purchasing division for doing that hard work. Because I knew it takes a lot of effort to get people into the system and get them going and used to that process. And so I just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Brady.
Mayor, council, we would like to just give a short presentation. Just, I know the SAT committee had the presentation on items seven A and seven B, but I thought it'd be helpful for the rest of the council to hear a little bit more about that. And so Christine, if we could invite you to come forward. This is regarding the changes and the terms and conditions for the sale of utilities. We're proposing some modifications to that. We could just do, give a brief presentation. Is that okay?
Thank you. No, we appreciate that. Ms. Zonka, good to see you.
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. On item seven A and seven B, we're talking about slight modifications to the terms and conditions for sale of utilities only for single residence lots that are outside the city of Mesa. So these are county island residents that come to the city primarily wanting water service. That's generally the issue. Sometimes they want public safety services. So the departments that have been working collaboratively on this are the Water Resources Department, Developments and Sustainability, Fire and Medical Department, and the City Attorney's Office. And I didn't do this right. I'm trying to make it to slide. I never find it. Oh, there it is. Okay. Okay, the proposed revisions against water service outside city limits only for single residence parcels. It is not being recommended for changes to multi-residents. That would be twoplexes, threeplexes, fourplexes, commercial or industrial facilities. What we're recommending is deferral of road improvements and potentially fire hydrants at the time of water service, and those requirements would be required to be actually built at the time of annexation, should they ever want to annex. What we're currently doing, when someone wants utility service, they're required to comply with city development standards. And those, the most expensive are typically the road improvements and then also extending the fire hydrants. I did want to emphasize that all of the other fire code requirements would still be in effect. What the terms and conditions do, they establish the rules for the sale of utilities, which is adopted by council, the ordinance that we're bringing before you. Once we have someone who wants service, then we do a utility service agreement that then is signed by city manager and is recorded at the county office. At the SAT committee, council member Kavanaugh recommended that in addition to the utility service agreement, that some kind of an affidavit or something else be developed that could be recorded. So there was an extra layer of conscious acknowledgement by the owner of the property that these improvements were being deferred. There's a long history of discussion on this issue. I'm not going to spend an awful lot of time, but it really goes back to 1996. We've discussed this numerous times, both with subcommittees. It was the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee several years ago, then it evolved into the Sustainability and Transportation Committee, and then we had several discussions with councils. So again, developing the city standards means typically dedication of the right-of-way or PUFE. We are not recommending deferral of that requirement. If we don't get the dedication at the time they want utility services, it's going to cost the city more money later on. Construction of adjacent street improvements, we currently require an in-lu payment, which doesn't keep up with the inflationary costs of actually building the road. So we can get an in-lu payment 10, 15 years before we ever decide to build the road, and it clearly doesn't meet the cost. They must meet fire code requirements and then construct all water lines necessary for water quality pressure and flow needs.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna.
So Ms. Zonka, in order for that to happen, they'll need some kind of site plan. Is that correct?
Yes, they have, when they want water service, they, if they're in the county, they actually go to Maricopa County to get their building permit. When they come to us for water service, they have a site plan and also their building permit number from the county. And so that's the point at which we look at the fire access requirements. If they don't meet those, then they have the alternative, not the requirement, but the alternative to install fire sprinklers if that's their choice. That's pretty much that whole slide, so we'll just move on. In addition to the deferral of standard requirements, we are deleting sections three M and three N. Those are remnants of past council direction when council wanted all parcels to be annexed into the city. The current council direction is not that. We don't want to talk about that today. But we will come back after the first of year, the first of the year and chat about annexation. Twenty-three A actually allows in the terms and condition, it gives the city manager or his designee the same ability to allow modifications to conditions in the county islands that we do have under the city regulations. So it aligns those two. If somebody wants to come and challenge a particular requirement, the city manager or the designee has the ability to have that appeals process. So it just, it aligns it to what's in the city. And then if the county resident still doesn't agree with the city manager, then they have the right to go through the appeals process through a committee and then to council if changes are desired. We did have a SAT recommendation of approval on the 25th of September. What you have on the agenda for the 6th is a resolution declaring the terms and conditions public document, and then also introduction of the ordinance on the 6th, which will then be considered for adoption on the 20th. Are there any questions, discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Zonka. So I know that for those who are watching, the SAT is a committee of council members that reviewed this in more detail about a week or so ago. I'm generally familiar with it. I know this is an issue the city government has struggled with for many, many years, developing single-family homes in county islands. So my impression is we're taking really a very reasonable approach to accommodating people that want to build, and so it seems like good changes to me. So thank you for all the work on those council members that sat in on the meeting earlier to review the details of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next item is on our agenda for today is two A, to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction regarding the processing of a substantial amendment to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program and Closeout Plan. Ms. Albright, I believe you're going to make this presentation.
Yes, see, we were so excited to talk to you about this. We jumped up here early.
You want to introduce yourself?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Mark Hirschberg, Director, Parks, Recreation, and Commercial Facilities. I'll jump in a little bit later in Tammy's presentation at the end here to talk about the project.
Thank you, Mark.
So what we're here to talk about is the Neighborhood Stabilization Grant. It is, we call it NSP-1. We were granted NSP-1 and three. But before I get into the amendment, I thought we'd go over a little bit of history since we do have new members. Basically, during the housing crisis, the federal government produced this grant to help with stabilizing the neighborhood and the foreclosures. In 2008, Mesa received 9.6 million. Now, there are some processes to determine where you're going to spend that money, and eight-five-two-zero-four ended up being the area which we targeted. We did target homeownership as well as some rental, but the idea is homeownership stabilizes the neighborhoods. Eight-five-two-zero-four, by the way, is about Main to baseline and Mesa Drive to Val Vista. Over the past six years, we have added to that fund about 4 million in what's called program income. So every time we sold a house, and I'll kind of talk about how the program works, but every time we sold a house, we added back into the fund. And to date, we have spent about 11 million in that area. Basically, what we did is the eligible activity was to purchase, rehab, and resell homes as well as some rental. We've done about 40 homes have been sold to qualifying families in that area, and we've produced about 35 rental units. The rental units are usually turned over to the nonprofits, and they use them to house families that are hard to house. So what we're looking at now is HUD is trying to close out these grants, and what they have done is they've expanded the eligible activities. Before, all we could spend it on was housing. Now they've expanded the activities to include several activities that we would find under CDBG, one of which is public facilities. So in an effort to try to maximize our investment into that area that we've already put, we're looking at taking the remainder of the funds and putting it to a public facility that is obviously coming up in that area. The reason we're looking at expanding the eligibility as well is that if we don't expand our current activities, we will never reach closeout, or not for several years anyways, because we're required to spend the program income first and then go to the line of credit. Every time we sell a house, we have new program income. So we're building this pot, and we can't necessarily get to the line of credit. So this will help us meet the closeout requirements for HUD. Now, they have not given us any timeframe, but they've said they would like it closed as quickly as possible. So we have right now about 1.6 in our line of credit and about 1 million in program income. So that's about 2.6. So again, to maximize an investment we've already put in here and further stabilize this neighborhood as well as meet the closeout requirements, this is, staff feels this is a great opportunity. What we'd like to do is take that money and put it towards the new Eagles Park, which Mark will go over. And then, once that money is spent, we can close out the grant. Now, it will be only closing out NSP-1. NSP-3 is still open, and it is still only housing. And so we're still working through, I think we have about four or five homes, we're still working on remodeling right now. So.
Mayor, council, as you'll recall, Eagles Park is the former, what we're now calling Eagles Park, is the former Mesa Junior High Site, which is a, was one of the projects identified in the 2012 Parks and Recreation Bond Program. As we spent, as, working with the vice mayor and the surrounding community, we spent a great part of the spring and better part of the summer working directly with that surrounding community to identify needs, lay out, and what would work the best for that environment. The design you see up there is what we've come to propose as the best laid plan to date for Eagles Park. As part of that, we were going to touch the eastern half of the gymnasium building to restore the gym, bring it up to code, and allow for some community programming in there. With this additional funding, we believe the opportunity exists, and we think it makes the most sense to take advantage of remodeling the rest of the gymnasium building and creating a smaller, a community use building, a community center with multipurpose rooms to allow us to do a number of programming opportunities there. One of the things we sorely lack in our recreation offerings in Central Mesa and West Mesa is indoor program space. And this will definitely meet that need and allow us the opportunity to do anything from fitness classes, before and after-school programs, summer camp opportunities, arts and crafts, numerous different activities that we can work with the community and offer to the community at White as well, and continue to be a great complement to the rest of the park, which will include two lighted soccer fields, playground, remadas, exercise equipment with an exercise path there. We believe it would be a great, good fit for the community and a great way to utilize space and allow us the opportunity to expand our recreational offerings.
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to catch you off.
No, I just wanted to give you an update on timeframe, too. There's been a couple of questions and of timing with the, as we work through the IGA agreements with the school district. And I just wanted to let you know that part of that delay has been, as we worked through that land deal, surveys and getting the property lines established without crossing different easements and cutting those easements in half. So that's taken a little time with our real estate folks to get that squared away. But working with the city attorney's office, they did inform me that next week, all of the IGAs for this site, as well as the Powell location, will be in the school district's hand for reviewing and comment. And then also, just going through this process, we'll slow the project down a little bit because we're required to follow the federal construction guidelines and historical surveys and that type of stuff. So it'll slow it down a little bit, but with the addition of 2.6 million to the project, we think that's a worthwhile opportunity to slow down.
Great. Councilmember Luna.
Are you also looking at the auditorium? Is that part of the plan in terms of retrofitting the area refurbishing?
Mayor, councilmember Luna, we, our agreement with the school district calls for the auditorium, the cafeteria, the library, and the gymnasium to remain standing. When we did our initial audit, as we looked at initial, through the building surveys and everything, the initial audit determined that there was so much work, initial work that had to be done for the auditorium, the library, and the cafeteria to bring them up to code and address ADA issues, that it didn't make sense to do that if we didn't have a fully identified program, and we didn't have budget dollars available to do that at this point either. The only building it made sense to invest in initially was the gymnasium because it had the least amount of code and ADA issues.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
This might be a question for Mr. Brady, but could any of this money be used to help build the retention basin on the other side where the football on the track was to alleviate the flooding that happened in that Miller Street and Solomon neighborhood?
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I think what we'll probably do is that'll just be incorporated as part of the design of this whole play area there on the...
What is that, the west side?
East.
East?
If you go back to the picture, it just shows Frasier. Is that kind of...
Oh, right. Okay. But what I'm, yes. So what I'm suggesting, though, is that entire area of grass could be used as stormwater detention, both on the Solomon side as well as on the Horn side, because we still have significant water coming down, both Solomon and Miller, but also down Horn. So when we look at the design, we're going to try to incorporate some thoughts about, and if we can spread out the, and this is, now, this is all happening like now, this discussion just started, but if we can lower the fields just a little bit, that whole area, then we, if we can use that whole area as a detention, retention area, then the need to go much deeper. If we can spread it out of a larger area, we don't minimize the impact of going to. But yes, we're going to try to incorporate those ideas about what we can do with these fields to help alleviate some of the, where a lot of the water stands in the intersections and the streets in that area, and see if we can direct it into this area also. And so, does that help?
So it's just for, you're looking at for just this, these programmable fields right now and then in the future where the football field and the track stadium was?
Yeah. And I'm imagining, we'll let the stormwater folks look at it, but I, engineers look at it, but I'm assuming we can, we should look at the entire area there.
Both sides of Frasier.
Both sides of Frasier, yeah. Because the larger area we can use, then we don't have to go quite as deep, and it doesn't impact the programmable area for soccer or baseball or whatever we're using out there. Can I go back to a real, the comment or the question regarding the buildings that are remaining out there? So our agreement with the school district was, as they came in and had the funds to remove all of the improvements in this area, we asked them to hold out or not to demolish, what is it, the four or five buildings that you see on the site plan today. But the school district's made it clear to us that the, if, and we've kind of asked them to hold off on demolishing those buildings. They have the funds to demolish all of those buildings if we ask them to do so. Obviously, it sounds like we're looking forward to programming the gymnasium and spending money there. But at some point, we're going to have to make a decision, probably in the next two or three years, about whether or not we're going to continue to keep the auditorium, the cafeteria...
Library.
The library. Because we need to give them, they have a window of about three years or so that they have to spend that money that they've set aside for this demolition. Beyond that, if we go beyond that, if we don't make a decision before then, then the agreement will be essentially, that'll become our responsibility. So we just, you know, it's not a decision we have to make today, but at some point down the future, in the next couple of years, we're going to have to decide whether or not to keep those or not.
Chris, Mayor, if I may, on a remotely related question, on the buildings that they, we are going to have them demolish, that they have the money for, can, before they do that, can we see if the fire department wants to use them for drainage?
No, I'm serious. Because that's, I mean, it'd provide an excellent opportunity to utilize a commercial building for some... Sure.
Probably the police department might want to use them for some school safety exercises.
We could do that. We'll probably, we'll need to just put that on our list of things in a couple of years.
On the question of utilizing these fields for further, better drainage in the area, have we, I know Beth Hunning is behind, and I'm wondering if we've taken a look at the water flow, the natural water flow of this region, and would these basin, would this potentially be a good use for the basin, given the direction of the water flow that's in the area?
Yes, we, Mayor, councilmember Summers, we are right now evaluating the flows in this area. We have kind of a couple of things. One, we have the flows on Main Street, and we have the flows from the local neighborhood there. That area was built quite a while in the past when standards were different, and there are no retention basins in those neighborhoods, and they're very flat. So we are looking at this site to be able to add some retention basin volume to the area. It does work. We are looking at potentially offloading Main a little bit by extending a pipe down Solomon or Miller in that area, and then using this site as a basin.
Okay, so we would have to put in some infrastructure in order to move that water into this location?
Yes, we would.
All right. So, and we would budget that for next year or...
And just real, yeah, real quickly tomorrow, we are applying for five grants through the Maricopa County Flood Control District. They have a small grants program. We've used it a lot in the past, which solved a number of problems for us in the last couple of months. But they give us about $250,000 a project to assist us with repairing these things, and then many, transportation will be providing some matching funding as well to that grant so that we can use that money to put the infrastructure in.
Okay. That'll work. Thank you very much. This is a part of town that could benefit in several ways from what we're talking about, so we appreciate the attention that you've given to it. Thank you very much. Any additional questions, council?
So for the next steps?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need guidance to move forward with the substantial amendment. We do have to advertise it. Has to go through a 15-day public hearing period, and then we hope to have it back on an agenda on November 3rd for the adoption of the resolution that we will file with HUD, and then we'll be able to move forward with the new activities.
I want to make sure we have direction from council. I think the...
It's about moving forward, so. I think we're going to get some direction.
Well, I was just really impressed that HUD is allowing us to shift this money into public side infrastructure, which was really kind of the missing piece from the program because it had a heavy emphasis on the stabilization of the homes, which I think it had an effect in that area. Councilmember Glover knows better than any of us, but I think it's really cool that we're able to shift this money into that public side because it really fills that gap in the program, so I'm all for it, yeah.
If may, I like the project as well, and particularly as Vice Mayor noted, that we can tag on to that some flood control relief for an area that was impacted by a huge storm. I was going to use the hydrological thing, but I'm going to back out. But I think one of the questions are going to be, what are the other uses of the money that would have been eligible under HUD? So we're going to do a park with some flood control. What else might we have been able to use that money for?
They kind of mirrored some of the CDBG uses. There was economic development in there, there, public facility. Do you remember any of the other ones?
They'll say the main changes were the public facility and economic development they had thrown in there. But of course, a lot of that had strings attached to it and what you're doing. The main objective also, what they had thrown in there, which was already part of NSP-1, was slum and blight and addressing it. What they were doing was allowing demolition of that. But you also had to have an activity plan to continue forth, couldn't just leave it vacant. And we were looking at...
So slum and blight, for example, we might have been able to use it to scrape old abandoned structures?
Yeah. You could have used it to get rid of abandoned structures or old dilapidated structures in the area. Of course, you have, you can't leave it. You have to have a plan to develop it, and it can't sit idle very long. So that would require building it. So you're, there's a number of things we looked at, and it becomes, or poses a challenge to develop that site right away.
I think it's a great project. It was something that we had planned. It was in our Parks Bond, and now to add to this, the fact that we can take care of some flooding issues in the neighborhood adds another element to it. The only thing I had wished is that this either had run through a subcommittee for direction, or it had come to this committee as a whole to say, there are going to be changes in NSP-1, we need to spend this money right away. Here are several options, and that staff would recommend that we put this into the park, but here are some options. Instead, what was brought forward was just this single option. I like the options, so I'm not angry about it, but I think for this council, it would be best if we had, we were able to give some direction and input on where we felt this money would have been best put. That said, I think you got what we would have done, but it would be nice if we could have told you that. That was my only thing. Thanks.
Good point. And again, I think, to me, this seems like a great coincidence, frankly, that we have this kind of problematic neighborhood, and everything is coming together right now, where we have potential funding through the Flood Control District that we'll be lobbying for, for some of the low-grade changes, plumbing changes in the neighborhood, and then really a great use for the neighborhood if we can program these ball fields or soccer fields.
Right. And Mayor, council, this became, there wasn't any other project that we could come up with that would allow us to achieve the objective and goals that HUD has sent out by spending the 2.6 and doing it within the region, the area that was already designated by NSP-1. And we felt like because that's where we've invested, a lot of the residents who's home, who are now living in that area because of NSP-1 would benefit from this. And there's always been this concern about leaving the school property and not improving it. And so this was an opportunity, we thought, that, you know, the council, this is a priority Mesa Junior High. We've heard that from many of the council members, so we were trying to meet that objective also. So I think this is really by and far, we couldn't come up with any other ideas of anything that would come close to meeting the goals here for this project.
Money has to be spent in that area.
Yeah, it has to be spent in this area, and the goal is try to spend a whole lot of it in one area. And the nice thing is we're not creating a program or a project that we weren't already anticipating having to deliver the services for, so it's already been incorporated in our plan. So we didn't have to add on to another, add something else. And we couldn't, the other thing is we couldn't add it to existing parks, because we did look at Reed Park thinking, that was even closer kind of to the areas that we'd been in NSP-1, but it wasn't eligible under their requirements.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Just a quick question for Tammy. When is the firm date that NSP has to be emptied out by, according to HUD? Have they given us that firm deadline?
They have not given us a firm deadline. What they did is they said they would like us to move to close out as quickly as possible. But they did not give a hard deadline.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We look forward to moving this along. Next agenda item is 2B, approval of the appointment of someone, Teri Benelli. I'm not sure if Mr. Benelli is present, or...
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I saw this item, and I wondered, do we have any background on her? What are her qualifications to be on this?
Good point.
I'll move.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
For those of whom, Ms. Benelli is now a member of the, rejoins the Economic Development Advisory Board, where she has served previously well, and we appreciate her taking on that assignment again. Item 3, information regarding the job order contracting projects. Do we have any questions or comments from the council on this? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Number 4, acknowledge receipt of minutes from various boards and committees. Do we have a motion? Motion, motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. None opposed? Okay, here are reports on meetings and our conferences attended. Council. Yes, Mr. Summers?
I have one. I just returned from Washington DC yesterday where I went with one of our members of the Mesa Fire and Medical Department to, one of our important community partners, the American Red Cross, who takes care of home fires. They put together a summit on the home fire problem. They've noticed it continues to, even though the, the number of fires continues to remain fairly steady, last year, the number of fire, home fire-related fatalities ticked up a little bit. And so they have put together a plan to distribute smoke detectors in urban areas with the goal, over the next five years, of reducing the fire-related deaths by 25%. So Mesa is looking forward to being a partner in, in, in reducing fire deaths. And here, we don't have a lot, which is a testament to fire prevention and our fire department, but certainly we do have quite a few fire-related injuries and fires, particularly in southwest Mesa, so we're looking forward to trying to reduce that number significantly.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Any other reports on meetings or conferences? If not, we will, Mr. Brady, anything to update us on the schedule of meetings and general information?
Just a, a few items. Free, free Fall Fridays, so every Friday until November 21st, there will be a performance at the Mesa Arts Center New Alliance Pavilion Stage. These performances go from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then another round, sorry, it goes, there's a period from eight, 6:00 to 8:00, and then from 9:00 to 11:00. So invite everybody to come out on, on Fridays, Free Fridays at the Pavilion. Our next council meeting will be Monday, October 6th. We also want to remind everyone coming up, we can talk about this a little bit next week, but coming up on the 18th is our Celebrate Mesa event, which will be out at Red Mountain Soccer Complex from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.